Call to order, the August 17th, 2020, Ellsworth City Council meeting. Second item, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, just to begin, in accordance with an act to implement provisions necessary to the health, welfare, and safety of citizens of Maine in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency, as enacted to read Section G-1, 1 MRSA, Section 403-A, public proceedings through remote access during declaration of state of emergency due to COVID-19, the meeting will be held live at One City Hall Plaza in the City Hall Council chambers with only the allowable number of participants according to the governor's executive orders. Citizens may email questions and public comments on the public hearing agenda items, as well as other items this evening, to Chair Dale Hamilton at DHamilton@EllsworthMaine.gov. I'll repeat that, DHamilton@EllsworthMaine.gov, prior to and throughout the duration of the meeting. The meeting will be broadcast live on the City of Ellsworth, Maine Facebook page and YouTube page, as well as recorded and made available live on Spectrum Channel 1303. The one reminder I would have, if you do email a comment in and you don't hear it read, please double-check. We've had a couple of incidents where they've not come through, so please note that, because we certainly want to read all comments. Item three, rules of order, we follow Robert's rules of order and any other rules that we determine at the annual organizational meeting. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council, 7/20/20, regular monthly meeting.
Some moved?
Have a motion?
Second.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Item five, city managers' report.
The Public Works crews have been busy. For those who bring their children to Molton Park, to the playground, you may have noticed new woodchips out there, so hopefully no more skin knees. Out at Green Lake Boat Lodge, there is a new pedestrian bridge, taking people more safely down to the water. Nominations papers are available now for school board, city council, and library. Those papers are due September 18th. There will be a public meeting on the proposed extension of the bike pedestrian trail, out to the Sunrise Trail, and that public meeting will be on August 26th at 6:00 PM. Finally, the city will be moving Ward Two, which is currently at the Community Church of Christ, and that will be being moved to Your Place, which is where it used to be. So, and that obviously is for the general election in November, and that's it.
Any questions? All right. Item six, committee reports. Any councilors attend any committee meetings? Councilfellow.
Chairman, I attended a harbor commission meeting the other night. Things are going well down there. Two or three mornings that aren't filled, but there are some issues of personal reasons, more or less, that have not done that, but otherwise, everything has been going well. Gas sales are down a little bit, but they've sold diesel, which they never had before, so I guess overall gallonage is up over last year's because of the two. All going well. Bathrooms are open. Public seems to enjoy that. Things have gone well.
Any other call?
I would thank the state through the First Healthy Maine Grant for paying for the cost of maintaining the bathrooms down at the park as well.
Councilgovernor and I attended a follow-up meeting on the HCTC. This is, it had gone out of on hiatus during this COVID. Committee resumed, and we are restarting the, well, not restarting, we're picking up where we left off in terms of, this was to remind everyone, the process to look at securing a firm, to do a study on repairing and/or building addition to the HCTC building, so that it can meet the needs of the students now and in the future. So, that process is picking up where it left off, and that was at a place where the vetting of proposals we had put out, RFP, and those were reviewed, and so it's in that process, and I expect fairly soon something to be able to come back to the council for review and discussion. Any other meetings? All right. Item seven is citizens' comments. This is a portion of the agenda where citizens can comment on any item that's not on the agenda. You will be able to comment on the agenda items as they come up, but if you have an item that you would like to discuss, again, you can email it to me now. And let me just pause for a second, because it said the video feed cut out just now, but it looks like it's, it's all right. Yes, okay. So, it may have just cut out for a moment. It should be back. If you're listening and you don't have the feed, just try to log back in. So, if you have a comment you want to make, please send that on. If it doesn't come through in time before we move past this item, I will certainly read it later on, but, and then I'll look if there's any comments in the room. Yes. John.
Thank you. Yeah. Excellent. Good evening. Thanks so much for, Ellsworth City Council, for asking me to speak this evening. For context, my name's John Stein. I live in downtown Ellsworth. I'm the owner of Fogtown Brewing Company. I'm also a board member of Heart of Ellsworth. I was asked by the city to share a bit about Fogtown's response and our business pivoting during the COVID-19 pandemic, how we pivoted through the constant legislative changes and safety protocols, and to share some thoughts on what we're doing, and as well as what the city might be able to do to help some of the small businesses and the community at large. Over the past six months, our priorities at Fogtown have been, first and foremost, safety of our employees, as well as the customers and our community. Secondly, though, we've been focusing on keeping the business afloat, obviously. We've changed our products, where and how we sell them. We've switched to doing free deliveries, curbside pickups. We've also been doing, very focused, we've been very focused on community here in Ellsworth. Our core belief is that a healthy downtown community where we're operating is paramount to our success. So, even though finances have been tight for obvious reasons during the pandemic, we've really prioritized giving to groups like Northern Lights Hospital here in Ellsworth, Black Lives Matter, Restaurant Workers Fund, Main Community Foundation, and a number of others through the last six months. So, we want our year-round community and traveling tourists to like to feel welcome and inspired by the city. It takes work and collaboration between businesses, downtown organizations like Heart of Ellsworth and Healthy Acadia, as well as collaboration with the city council. So, thanks again to the council for taking this step and inviting me to speak. Last month, the city asked Healthy Acadia to help work on the budget plan. Its purpose was keeping our community safe, stimulating economic growth, recuperating some of the losses due to the pandemic, et cetera. This budget was for a second round of our state's Heat Maine Healthy Grant, which the council members were just talking about. Heart of Ellsworth was also paramount to this plan, and as a board member and small business owner, I was fortunate enough to be able to help out a little bit as well on this budget plan. Ellsworth applied for a small amount of funding on the last round, and we're happy to hear that because of this collaborative budget plan, we're awarded much more on this round. I think it was just over $59,000, which is really amazing. Hopefully, the council approves it on this evening's meeting. It's on the agenda. This grant will utilize state funding to help businesses by providing them with sanitizer, face masks, to give the customers information, and to help them figure out their safety protocols, so that these businesses don't have to do it alone, as well as another, a bunch of other things. It will also provide funds to get the word out about how Ellsworth is open for business, but of course, open safely. We've lost a lot of business due to the pandemic, and I know a lot of businesses in town have every little bit of, if we pull this, through this together, Ellsworth will come out on the other side of vibrant city. Ellsworth has done, I'm sorry, Fogtown has done some de-escalating, de-escalation training. We've reworked our outdoor space over and over again, started contact tracing, recreated cleaning plans, developed signs, et cetera. But I can tell you from experience that it's really difficult on my employees to enforce distancing and mask wearing, while also trying to be a bartender, provide customers with a great, you know, main outdoor beer drinking experience in a small town. But when more businesses also enforce these same safety protocols, when signs go up around the city, when we know we have the support of City Hall as well, this united front makes it very, very much easier on us and my employees. I hope that this collaboration between the city, its businesses, and its organizations can continue. Not only do we need a united front now as we face this pandemic together, but once things begin to return to normal, we need to stay united to make Ellsworth the very best city it can be. We need to focus our, for example, on our beautiful but underutilized waterfront, bolster our downtown, improve walkability. Last year, the city helped us a lot by installing parking signs right on Elm Street to make, to make use of the parking, provide more parking for people to walk around downtown and visit businesses, and help keep those streets safer for pedestrians. But more is needed, you know, additional sidewalks, downtown crosswalks are needed. I think Ellsworth is on the brink of something great. We need to let travelers know that Ellsworth is hip, as the kids say, I believe. We need it an even better place to live for our year-round community, and to let new people know that it's a great place to move to as well. So, thanks again. That's my two cents, and that's all you do, city council.
Thank you. I do not have any other comments coming through at this time?
I'd like to say something.
Sure, go ahead.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the people and the businesses of Ellsworth who have done such a great job to make our city look good, lots of flower beds, well-maintained lawns, and properties and so forth, and it really is fun to drive by places like this who have been, have been so properly maintained. So, thank you to all of you people who've done it.
Mr. Counselor.
There are a couple of emails that came through during the week, asking us specifically about a houseboat at Green Lake, and also somebody asking about noise ordinance at the basketball courts. I was wondering if you got those emails as well?
Yes, and those have been passed on to city staff to address those items.
I took a drive out to Green Lake on Saturday to see the boat, which is, looks like an ice shack on top of a pontoon. It was there, nobody around at the time. Because there's no motorization, technically, it's not a houseboat. I guess they pull it around. It probably would require an ordinance, you know, to enforce it, and still, there are state laws that come into effect, too. And then what was your second item, counselor?
Somebody was mentioning loud music and colorful language at the basketball courts.
Yeah, it comes down to the opinion of the police department. They determine whether something is violating the ordinance or not, but, you know, I doubt that somebody's sound machine is going to blow out that much. I appreciate if you're next door, that probably is too much, but, and we can have the swearing police go up there.
Whenever we get noise complaints at the courts, officers respond.
Yeah, they do.
And quiet them down, move them along.
Yeah.
If they're violating the posted rules, but, yeah, a little bit difficult to enforce the language.
Yeah.
Maybe we could put a swear jar out there and maintain the courts.
I think it's just a good reminder that it is close to some houses. I think most people that use the courts do it respectfully, and those were opened with, under the guidelines that exist by the governor, so, and the rules are posted, and so just be mindful of the rules and have fun playing basketball. All right. Item number eight, presentation of awards. Abby Morrow for 10 years of service with the Ellsworth Public Library. Read the certificate. The City of Ellsworth proudly presents a certificate of service to Abby Morrow in recognition of your 10 years of service to the Ellsworth Public Library. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Ellsworth, presented this 17th day of August, 2020. So, thank you. 10 years is a, certainly a long time to be in any position, and I appreciate the service that you've provided at the library. Unfinished business, the consent agenda. Consent agenda, all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Nine, council order number 08200, request of the tax collector Deputy Treasurer to initiate civil actions in the name of the City of Ellsworth for the purpose of collecting delinquent personal property taxes. Number 10, council order number 082001, request of the planning board to promote Nelson Gill from an alternate member of the Ellsworth Planning Board to a full member with a term to expire of 6/30/2022. Item 11, council order number 082002, request of the planning board to appoint Molly Friedland as an alternate member of the Ellsworth Planning Board with a term to expire 6/30/2021. Item 12, council order number 082004, request of the planning board to promote Mark Rich from an alternate member on the Ellsworth Planning Board to a full board member with a term to expire of 6/30/2025. Item 14, council order number 082005, request of the planning board to appoint Patrick Lyons as an alternate member of the Ellsworth Planning Board with a term to expire of 6/30/2022. Item 15, council order number 082006, request of the harbor commission to accept a resignation letter from Steve Henry with a term to expire on June 30th, 2023. Item 16, council order number 082007, request of the housing authority to appoint Jody Abbott to the City of Ellsworth Housing Authority Board as a tenant representative with a term to expire 9/1/2024. And item 17, council order number 082008, request of the Historic Preservation Commission to appoint Thomas Clark as a member with a term to expire on June 30th, 2022. Any councilors want to remove any items and vote separately? Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, move is presented.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? New business. So, coming up on new business are public hearings, so if you would like to weigh in on any of the public hearings, please feel free to send your comments in now, so that they'll be available as the item comes up. Item 18, public hearing in action on the application for the following licenses. Haley Carter, DBA, The Crafty Baker, 56 Dean Street, for a new City Class C vittular and BYOB liquor license, liquor-only license. And everything else set with that? Any comments, councilors? So, open the public hearing? Public hearing is open. Where this is a new application, you have via Zoom. Any questions for the?
I have any questions at all?
Any questions?
Yes, when will you be open?
October 1st.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Let me just double-check. No comments coming in? I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval for the request of The Crafty Baker for a new license.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Good luck.
Marg's Maxx Ellsworth LLC, DBA, Margaritas Ellsworth, 191 Main Street, for a new City Class B license, amusement liquor, vittular, and a new State Class A restaurant, lounge, malt liquor, wine spirits, Class 11 liquor license. Everything's all set with the applicants?
We have to stand up there and think of anything?
Only if they have questions.
Oh, okay.
You're more than welcome. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. And where's a new applicant? Any questions? Anything, if you, if there's something you'd like to say, you're more than welcome?
No, I just, I've been in this, I don't know if you guys remember me from Jasper's for years, but I'm just excited to be the GM and excited to get going on everything. This is Dave Brisman.
I'm David Brisman, the owner. Excited to see this through.
Good question.
Councilor.
It's the obvious one. When can I get something to eat?
Should be, should be next week.
Next week.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Are we going to have like a grand opening, or?
Well, as grand as it can be under current restrictions, but, you know, the plan is, I think, to have a good party when we're on the other side of all this.
Welcome to Ellsworth. Yeah, thank you.
Close the public hearing? Public hearing is closed.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Lil Max LLC, DBA, Hidden Vibes Tap Room, 59 Franklin Street, Suite 2B, for renewal of a City Class B license, vittular alcohol and amusement, and renewal of a State Class A lounge malt, spiritus and vinus, Class X 10 liquor license. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Chief Mosher?
Yes, good evening, councilor. I'm here tonight to explain my opposition to the signing of the renewal of this liquor license, this particular license. This particular business has been a bar in town for many, many years. The previous owners had their host of issues, but they were very willing to work with the law enforcement and work with us to bring a stop to a lot of the complaints and a lot of the fighting, and a lot of the other problems that they were having at the establishment over the years. This particular owner, since he opened in last September, September 2019, the business has, again, began to have a lot of the issues that we saw in the past, a lot of fights. Some of these fights with this particular owner, under this particular owner, have been significant, large numbers of people fighting in the parking lot. This becomes a significant issue of officer safety, problem for my officers, two to three officers responding to a fight in a parking lot with 40 to 50 people, which was the case of one of the fights in early September. We had an incident where one patron was severely injured in one of these fights and was actually transported to the hospital with facial injuries. This type of behavior was common. We responded to 24 complaints of this type in the first six months of the establishment being open. In addition to that, those 24 complaints, and I say this type, they were either, they were fights, disorderly patrons, where somebody was over-served and was asked to leave, and they became disorderly, and law enforcement had to get involved to get the person off the premise, or they were found in the community intoxicated to the point where they couldn't walk. One individual was found passed out on Main Street and had to be, we had to respond and call a cab for that individual to be able to make it home safely. So, these types of occurrences were commonplace in the six short months that this business was open. Mind you, they weren't open during the peak season, they weren't open during the summertime. These are the colder winter months. We're talking October, November, December, where these types of events were happening at this establishment. Our officers, on many occasions, responded to find actual bar employees engaged in fighting with patrons, and they were provided training by this department, by Sergeant Willie. He went and actually provided training to their staff, advising them that they were not to be putting hands on people, that they were able to legally, justifiably defend themselves, but if they needed somebody removed from the business, they needed to call law enforcement in order to do that. Yet, multiple occasions after that training took place, there were still instances where employees were engaged with fighting with intoxicated patrons. In January, excuse me, in February, we attempted to meet with the owners in order to go over some of the issues that we had had. We had issued several liquor violation summonses to them. Some of them, some of them, they settled with liquor enforcement at the state level to the tune of a $565 fine for allowing visibly intoxicated to remain, and there were two other counts that were of visibly intoxicated persons to remain on premise. So, they settled those, but we still have four other outstanding violations, liquor law violations, that are still pending. Those have been put on hold because of COVID. Just in comparison, another local business, alcohol-serving establishment, in that same six-month period, we only responded to six calls, and we only did four bar checks. We did 17 bar checks in this particular location over the six-month time period, in order to make an effort to keep the peace, to keep people safe, and to maintain an order and some semblance of safety for these patrons, for these people who wanted to come to this business, and come out and have a good time. So, these are the reasons why we were actually able on the first of March to, excuse me, first of, yeah, March, to meet with the owner at the business and go over some of the violations with liquor enforcement, so it wasn't just the Ellsworth Police Department, it was actually state-level liquor enforcement, to go over some of the concerns and some of the issues. And then unfortunately, shortly thereafter, the business was closed, you know, due to the COVID situation, so it's not clear as to whether they, you know, they have any intentions of, you know, of improving or following, you know, following the recommendations of the police department, and more importantly, abiding by the rules and regulations of their state-issued liquor license. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselors.
So, at this point, it hasn't reopened?
Correct. Okay. Thank you. And I assume you're the owner?
Yeah, my name's Corey Bedard.
You can step up so the public can hear. And if you could just say your name?
My name is Corey Bedard. I was not aware of the two that are outstanding violations. If I was aware, I certainly would have handled that. Another thing is, the employees did give me a big problem. Another thing, it was my first year owning a business. I've never, you know, been in this kind of position. I did let all my staff go, and I do have all new staff that's trained and ready to go. And as to the complaints, a lot of times, we did, we, you know, I can't, I can't physically make people do anything. A lot of things did happen out in the parking lot. I try to stop as much as I can, but I can't be there for every single instance. We did have a few big fights, like we had said, and those employees are not allowed back on the premises.
And those employees are not allowed back on the property and everybody's been retrained. So we can adhere to the guidelines of the state domain.
So one, one thing I want to bring to the counselor's attention that Dwight Tilton has sent an email to let us know that the code office has not been able to make contact with you to do the annual inspection. And so that inspection has not been completed and therefore that is not a completed part of this process as well. So that's a, that's a piece of.
Okay, so what, what was that? Sorry.
For our code office has been trying to set up a time to do the annual inspection and they've been unable to reach you. So your, your annual inspection of the facility has not been completed.
Okay, so how do we get that settled? I mean, I, my phone number is everywhere. I've called, you know, I've, I've had meetings, like he said, with the city council, with state liquor enforcement. I've had meetings with everybody and nobody's made me aware of these kinds of situations. And I even emailed him as well.
Well, I did try to call you today and he said your voicemail was not full or not set up?
I had my phone up all day because I was nervous about today. So today, I, today is completely understandable. This is a big day for me.
Oh, okay, I'll let him know tomorrow to email you.
But other than that, I did, I had meetings with everybody I had. I tried to, you know, be on their side and I tried to, you know, use them as a tool instead of, you know, against me. And I kind of feel like, yeah, there's a lot more people coming to my establishment, which, you know, with that kind of crowd, it does bring, you know, a little bit of craziness. I've tried, like I said before, I've tried to enforce everything that I possibly could, but there's only so much I can do at one time.
So hearing that and, and listening to the chief, it would sign, it would seem that a lot of the issues were you over serving patrons. So have you had any kind of a training or any kind of a how are you going to deal with that in the future?
As far as that goes, I have gotten all new bartenders and I have all new bouncers who are trained and they are all qualified by the state domain in a registered.
The bouncers are after the fact, who I would assume would be the servers serving too much.
Right, and all my, all my bartenders are certified through our serving, which is an approved state domain course that they're allowed to take. And I guess, I mean, I, I would feel like more training would be adequate.
Am I correct at this point in time, given the nature of your establishment, that you're not able to open at this point with the governor's orders?
Right, right now I'm a class X establishment, so we're not allowed to have anybody in there under government's orders. I'm not willing, I've, I've put a lot into it, so I'm not willing to just kind of let it fall away, slip away. That's why I'm here tonight. And I just want to be prepared, so if the day comes, we can reopen and bring Ellsworth back.
Counselor Kaplan?
So before COVID happened, what was your average daily volume?
Like as people wise or?
Yeah, your daily customer count?
Probably, probably a hundred, no, probably about 50 to 100.
And that's during what hours?
During the night hours. We were open from 5:00 to 1:00 a.m.
Okay, so, and what would be the average check, like the average check count?
Probably 25 bucks.
Okay, and the average drink cost?
Eight dollars.
Okay, so that means that?
They're getting two or three drinks. A lot of people do buy drinks for other people, which, you know, I, I can't say myself I haven't bought somebody a beer. I have bought somebody a beer. So I mean, some people's bills are a little bit higher, but some people are also paying for more than just themselves.
Okay, and some bars actually go through, if they've had issues with ruckus crowds, they've actually hired a uniformed, either a uniformed officer or a uniformed security guard, which brings a presence of behavioral, it's a supplemental behavioral thing. Have you considered that?
We did. My bouncers were plain clothes when we opened. We did change that and when I got all the new security shirts and they were all wearing security shirts and sweaters and that seemed to break the tension a little bit between everybody. And when people would see that security, they would, you know, chill out a little bit. But, I mean, that would definitely something to consider.
And currently he can't open anywhere, right?
Right.
Counsel Blatchett?
In a facility that serves alcohol, do you also have to serve food?
Yes.
Do you have a kitchen?
I don't have a kitchen. I am under a limited menu, which allows me to serve pizza that Mike's Country Store makes for me, which generates them money as well, and they do a full bar menu for me as well.
Have there been times when you have run out of food and there was nothing on the premises?
No, I always have hot pockets on the premises, at least.
I'm sorry, you always have one?
A hot pocket that I can make in a microwave there, which was approved by the liquor enforcer, liquor inspector.
Thank you.
Counsel Kaplan?
Until the application's complete, I don't see where we can do anything on it, really. If it's not signed off yet, you're gonna be arranging that?
Yes, I will be arranging that. I just need to, I need to, I just need to know who I need to speak with and I can take care of anything.
So if you contact the code office, they'll be able to let you know what you need and be able to arrange that. Before I ask for a motion, because I think you are close to doing that, is I, I would just like to say, it sounds like you've taken some, some positive steps with changing your employees, getting the training, kind of following what Chief Mosher's talking about. I, I think it would be important as well in terms of this interim period to find out about the outstanding, I heard you say four, you said two, so I think.
Two of them I did take care of. I do remember something about two more, but the, the guy who contacted me about the first two, somebody from the state domain, I can't remember his name. I, I never heard anything. So I just figured, I don't know, I, I never checked on it because I never heard anything about it.
So I, I wouldn't begin to tell you how to run your business. That's not certainly my responsibility, my role, but I do think that it, when I hear the kinds of concerns about what's happening, that's concerning because certainly the, the citizens of this community want a nice environment. They want an environment that's safe and they don't want to be caught up in that. And when I hear some of the things that you're talking about, that you didn't know, I was waiting for somebody else to call me, that really falls to you.
Right.
And so in the interim, in terms of while you're doing this, perhaps talking with Chief Mosher again in terms of reviewing your plans, being able to come back and talk to us about even more in terms of that, that ownership of what you've done and what you're doing and, and how you really want to move forward to, to create a safe environment. Because if you're doing that, great, I would, I certainly would wish you well with your business. I just think it needs to be a safe business for everyone.
I agree.
I, I do think that when you come back, I think all of us probably would like to hear some, some evidence that you have found out what, what is lacking and have taken steps to, to correct it and to be able to tell us what, what you have done positively in order to get this license. I know you've probably made a financial investment, so it's in your best interest to be your own advocate.
All right.
And find out what it is you need exactly, so you don't get blindsided.
Okay, I definitely will take a step back and relook at everything and consider everything for sure.
Good luck to you.
So I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Chairman, I move to table until the application is complete.
Motion to table?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. So it's tabled until you, you submit a new application, completed application.
Okay.
Daniel C. Potts, DBA Lakeside Cedar Cabins, 397 Mariahville Road for renewal of a city lodging license. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? See if nothing has come in. I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of Daniel C. Potts for renewal of his license.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? I should have you read this, Counsel Phillips, but I will do. Arg, incorporate. DBA Pat's Pizza, 396 High Street for renewal of a city Class C license, victueller and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus and vinous liquor license. Open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? Seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Melanie Omler Fox, DBA Helen's Restaurant at Ellsworth, 55 Down East Highway for renewal of a city Class C license, victueller and alcohol, and renewal of a state restaurant malt, spiritus and vinous, class 1, 2, 3, 4 liquor license. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Seeing no comments. Counsel Kaplan?
There's two applications here. One says the heat is not the owner and that one has all the signatures on it, but the other application where Melanie's the owner just needs the signatures. I'm sure it's just a formality.
Yeah, it was the timing of the application that was sent out. I was working from home and the one was printed at the wrong location, but that's the one that had signatures. I just wanted to give you both as a cross reference, as the reference.
Okay, great.
Close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Counsel Kaplan? Unanimous. All right. Item 19, presentation of the annual update by Catherine Longley, Chief Operating Officer for the Jackson Laboratory, sponsored by Chair Hamilton. Is a request to reschedule this for the September, October, or November agenda? Is there a motion to remove it?
Should I remove it? Move it. Request removal of item 19 from tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. 19 is removed. Item 20, Council Order Number 082009, request of the Public Works Director to accept the mineral screening bid.
Good evening, counselors. Here tonight for a couple of things that are pretty standard yearly. First of all is the mineral screening bid. This is for the yearly screening of our sand from our city pit for winter sand for sanding the roads. On the August the 11th, we had a bid opening. Four RFPs were requested and four bids were received. As you can see, per year attached, the low bidder was KJ Dugas Construction. I'm recommending, KJ Dugas has done it for us in the past and I am recommending that it be awarded to them.
Out of curiosity, is there any sand left from last winter? Was it empty?
Nothing.
Out of curiosity.
Yes, John.
How many more years' worth of sand do we have in, in our pit? If you had to guess.
That's a good question. Honestly, we still can go down some, but we have to reestablish some of the banks. I would say we probably have a good 10 to 15 years left.
That goes by often quick.
With what we have open and then if we work our way back towards the pond back there, just blanked on the name of it.
Sounds.
So, a while yet.
You probably won't be driving by then anyway, so.
Boy, now I'm glad I haven't faced masks on.
Mr. Chairman, move to, move to approve the bid for mineral screening at KJ Dugas Construction at the rate of $2.65 per cubic yard for screening city sand. The city also reserves the right to order sand screened from January through April 2021 at a price of $3.65, $3.65 per cubic yard.
Second.
Motion. John, you really, that was good. Any discussion? All those in favor? Item 21, Council Order Number 082010, request of the Public Works Director to accept the winter salt bid.
So this one is again the yearly supply of our winter salt. On August 12th, we had a bid opening. Five RFPs were requested and only two bids were received and one decline letter was received. And as you can see from the summary of bids on your sheet, New England Salt Company was low bidder at $50.25 per ton, which is actually down from last year. And we worked with them last winter and they worked well, very responsive and timely. And so I am requesting to award the bid to them.
What did we pay last year?
50, 40 something, so it's just slightly down.
Just a little bit, no?
Yep.
No, we didn't say $5.
No. I do have to say we have a better price than some other local municipalities, so just because of the sheer amount we use.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to award the fiscal year 2021 winter salt supply contract to New England Salt Company at 50.25 per ton of delivered road salt, a contract amount to be funded from the highway department operating budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 22, Council Order Number 082011, request of the Public Works Director to purchase a bulk quantity of road culverts.
This one is something I think we did for the first time in a while at least last year and I'm requesting to repeat again. We, the first time last year, we ordered a bulk order of culverts, which first of all saves the city money. When you buy bigger quantities and fill up a whole truck and have it delivered to us, you get a better price than when you buy them piece by piece. Last year, I think we saved about $5,000. This year, it's right around that. I'm requesting a little less this year just because we do actually have some leftover from last budget, or last time we ordered some. So we are asking to purchase, we went out and got quotes from, we have three different vendors that gave us prices on culvert orders and the lowest was Hammond Lumber Company. So we are requesting to use Hammond Lumber Company to purchase approximately $22,594 worth of culverts.
The culverts, do you get them in bulk and they are in stock out there or did you?
Yep, yep, we just go out, try our pile out back and grab what we need.
All right, no, I didn't know if it was something that was like a pre-purchase and you picked up at Hammond, but they are actually delivered in on-site.
They are delivered in on-site and we actually are cleaning up a space to organize them. We learned from last year. They were kind of scattered a bit and this year we're cleaning out some areas and going to organize them by size and. It worked out very well. It's in the spring when, you know, budget is tighter, we have plenty of stuff to keep us going, so.
And you don't have your crews doing one-off drives for culverts?
Yep. And when a random driveway fails on a January night, we've got any size we need out back.
Can you purchase a quantity that's basically what you can get through in a, in a season?
Um, yep, it's based on, I look at what roads we're planning to pave in the next, depending on how much money you guys give us, but, in the budget, but I look at what we're planning to pave in the next year or two and then how many driveways. we're planning to pave in the next year or two, and then how many driveways we generally, I mean, to be honest, we had had to buy some just one-offs, just because we ran out of size or didn't have enough of a size, but for the majority, it works out very well.
I realize you don't have too many choices as to where you get your money from, but I have to say, it's unfortunate that a big chunk of money has to be taken from the local roads budget when there's so many places, especially in town, that could use a little extra pavement. I won't name any places or anything, but it's just, it's just an observation.
Well, the ones that are being taken from the local roads are the ones we're doing in prep for paving, so it's because we're going to pave there that we are replacing them, and the ones coming out of the highway budget are more of your just random driveway culvert type things.
Yeah, I'll let that go. I don't want to put you on the spot. We need a motion. All right, I'm a good spot. Move to approve a purchase agreement for a bulk order of culverts from Hammond Lumber Company for $22,594.45, $16,552.09 to be funded from the local roads, $9,0995901, and $6,042.36 from the Highway Department General Fund, 1030300-53038.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Item 23, Council Order Number 082012, Request of the Facilities Manager to Approve a Contract for Milton Park Mowing and Grounds Maintenance Services.
Is Steve, Steve on the line?
Uh, Steve here, yep.
Oh, there you are.
Yep, so, we obtained two quotes for the landscaping at Milton Park, excluding the mowing that is now being done by the Public Works Department. We contacted four companies, we had three that were interested. One ended up not submitting a quote, did not have time to be able to do that type of service this season. Another one flat out didn't have the time. So, we got two quotes, one from Atlantic Landscaping, one from Goodall Landscaping. Goodall quote came in at $17,850. The quote from Atlantic Landscape Construction is $16,278. Atlantic Landscaping is a local company that actually did the first year of maintenance at Milton Park, and then we did change to Goodall. Basically, when we changed the fertilization techniques and went with Natural Lawn of America, which is part of Goodall. Goodall no longer can do the mowing, they are farther away, and that's why we decided to obtain new quotes for that. It is kind of hard for them to do their service when they're not doing the whole thing, because they are coming from Toxham, Maine. So, Atlantic Landscape was very interested in being able to take that contract back over. Obviously, they have a stake in the community also and would be happy to continue working for the city doing Milton Park.
Councilors.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Facilities Manager to Award the Contract for Milton Park Landscape Maintenance to Atlantic Landscaping at a cost of $16,278.
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Steve. Item 24, Council Order Number 082013, Request of the Police Chief to Award a Bid for Two New 2021 Police Cruisers and Authorize the City Manager to Sign All Necessary Agreements. Chief Mosher.
Good evening, councilors, again. Seems like every time I'm up here, it's about cruisers, but here we are again. So, the request is actually not accurate, because the proposal I'm asking you to consider approval tonight is actually for two 2020 Ford Cruisers as opposed to the 21. When we went out to bid, we were looking for 2021s in anticipation that we wouldn't be able to get 2020s, because previously we had been told that there weren't any around. But two of our vendors came back with, in fact, 2020s that they were going to have available in the near future, and 2021s are going to be extended weight, which is what we were anticipating, extended being into January and potentially as far off as February. So, the two vendors provided bids for both 2020s and 2021s. The low bid was for two 2020s, came in from Quirk Ford of Augusta, and you can see in the documentation, in the paperwork, their bid was for two Ford Explorer Interceptors 2020, all-wheel-drive vehicles for a cost of $67,618, minus the $12,020 for the trade of the two vehicles that we would be trading in, for a final cost of $55,598.
Councilors.
Chief Mosher, is there any giant difference between the 20s and the 2021s?
None at all.
Same thing.
Same exact thing, yeah.
And they are the newer ones, and some of the materials are available, swapped from the older ones, but some won't because of the design changes, as we talked about.
Correct, right, the 2020 and 2021s are the same, but the 2019, there's changes to the interior.
Yeah, a difference, it's on the line, no problem.
Councilwoman.
Mr. Chairman. City Manager Cole, in the past, one of, some other departments have requested using the old cruisers code enforcement, for instance, has there been any discussion on keeping one of these and passing it on down?
I believe we had discussions, but frankly, I can't remember specifically. Glenn, did we discuss that in the budget process?
Not this year. I know last year there was some discussion about the code taking one of the Explorers in place of the Taurus. My understanding is the Taurus is in need of some repairs, and so this is a good year. If we go with the 2020 bids, we're getting cars mid to late September, so the two trade-ins, the mileage is going to be under 100,000. So, you know, this is probably, as opposed to last year, where we had to wait, so the mileage really got up on those vehicles that we were trading in. You know, for a vehicle that's going to be more reliable for code, this is probably a good year to take advantage of keeping one of those vehicles for that purpose. The HCTC Law Enforcement Program has also expressed an interest in possibly purchasing one of the vehicles to use for their law enforcement program, and I've been in discussions with, with Ms. Bowles up there at HCTC about that possibility for one of the vehicles as well. So, there are, you know, is potential for purchasing, selling the vehicles out as opposed to the trade-in value.
What's the trade-in value?
So, they, for, it varied depending on the, on the actual cars, but for the 2020s from Quirk, it was about $6,000 per vehicle for trading. And, because the two, the two cars that we're trading are virtually identical, the mileage is just a few, will be just a few miles off of each other, and they're the same year, so there's very little difference between the two.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that if it's sold to the school department, it will be sold at a higher price than what we would be getting for a trade.
Yeah, so, the school department, they want to, the vehicle's going to be used for mock traffic stops and other types of training things for the students, so a lot of the equipment would remain with the vehicle. The light bar, for example, the, or the lighting, the cage would remain in, which again is, we can't reuse the cage out of that vehicle anyway, because it doesn't fit in the new cars. The, well, the radio would be replaced with one of our old radios, so they could use the radio for mock, you know, for mock traffic stops and so forth. The camera system would be removed, because those are very expensive and we don't intend to replace that. The computers, of course, would be removed, but the other equipment would remain for the school's purpose. So, because of that, there would be an increased, you know, value in the vehicle above and beyond what the trade-in estimate was from the dealership. So, we would have, we could work up exactly what the, you know, what those cost figures would be for additional cost for the vehicle, and to ensure that the school's getting, you know, a good deal, but also the city's recovering some of the money that they're going to have to spend to replace that equipment.
Equipment, some of it that couldn't be used anyway.
Correct, yeah, but, right, couldn't be used, but could be, you know, we could, it does have value to other, you know, other municipalities or that have those older vehicles that perhaps would, you know, would want to put a cage in it. So, so, still has value, although we can't adapt it to our future use with the new vehicles.
I can just throw a little extra to the replacement of the COVID vehicle. The COVID vehicle that they're currently using is on its last legs, so this would definitely be an improvement for that, and I did make that suggestion when I estimated my budget that this would be a good time to do that. I guess it's definitely needed.
Would it delay you getting your cars in any way?
No, but, I don't believe, I mean, obviously, it's intercity as far as the COVID vehicle goes, I don't know how, you know, I don't know exactly how that would all work as far as the financial, financial part of that. The school, you know, obviously, I will, if a bid is approved, then I'll reach out to Ms. Bowles immediately and see what their, you know, what their capacity is and what their ability would be to provide funding. But typically, when we get the vehicles, you know, we make payment upon, upon delivery, so it could, could delay a matter of a day or two or week maybe, but nothing significant, because if the school, the school department, you know, can't, can't come up with the funding or doesn't have the money available, then we would just go through with the trade-in.
So, what would this do for the order? Would we have to amend it? If we approve the purchase, but we don't approve the trade-in, would we have to amend the order?
Yeah, we could, you could modify a motion to include that either, either trade-in or provide to code and/or to HCTC, just kind of make all the options available, and then out of, once that happens, they'll, they'll make the selection based on what's, what's best, best choice. Council Philipps.
To authorize the city manager to make an alternative decision.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we approve it for the numbers that we're looking at here, and if there's an alternative, that gives them a maximum price that can be spent with what we see in front of us, so they'll know what our expenditures are, and if you can do more on your trade-ins or whatever else, and that'll just reduce price, but that would give you a maximum amount. And also, allow you to secure the cruisers before they go somewhere else. Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Chief of Police to Award a Bid to Quirk Ford of Augusta in the amount of $55,598 for two new police cruisers, to be funded from the Police Cruiser Capital Improvement Account, 9090959007, with the provisory that if he has a chance to sell those other two trade-ins, that he will spend no more money than that. Something like that?
Second.
Does that work, Chief Mosher?
Absolutely.
Motion, a second, discussion?
Spend no more money than $67,618.
$55,598 is his maximum expenditure. As it said in front of us.
Right. That's with the trade-ins.
Well, the trade-ins are the offset, because we'll actually make some money if we sell it to the school.
It should be less than $55,000 if we can sell it to the school.
Yeah, I think that works, just for $55,000, up to $55,000 or whatever.
Yeah, I think we can make that work.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Item 25, Council Order Number 082014, Discussion and Action on the Request of the Public Safety Planning Committee Concerning the Role of Emergency Medical Services Within the Ellsworth Fire Department. Again, I'll just take a moment to say, if you have comments on this or other agenda items, dhamilton@ellsworthmaine.gov.
Mr. Chairman, Councilors Miller, Catherine, myself, met with Chief of Police, Chief Police Mosher, Chief, Fire Chief Tupper, and had a final discussion on moving ahead. Chief Tupper presents a valid point in moving ahead with allowing him to continue the process for emergency services in the amount that he is. It's, becomes, I think, although it is not, does not come without a cost, it's a public service that I think we should offer. The ambulance service does a fine job, but there are instances where they aren't available at times, and you cannot prepare for everything, which I understand, but that gives another alternative for the safety of our citizens. There was some anecdotal evidence from the, both the police chief and the fire chief that being at scenes needing help, that there was a time delay for ambulances to arrive. And I read in the paper about, it was written an article after the meeting about Northern Light saying that they had criterion meetings and numbers, and that they were doing a good job, and I don't doubt that they are. But when we have two of our employees on scene reporting to us that there is a delay that seems excessive, then I think if we can offer some safety for our people, that we need to do it. And as I said, it does not come without a core, a cost. We have some further training to do, which is marginal, there's going to be additional across, across the road for, for dispatch. Present, the Fire Chief proposes using existing equipment to do that. That being said, we're going to be driving around, doing some scenes with a $500,000 or $600,000 piece of equipment, it's not a sports car made to do that, so eventually, if this does continue, there's undoubtedly going to be an expense for some type of a little smaller vehicle that's an easier response that can carry the equipment. I think that's probably the conclusions that the three of us met after listening to it, and I would welcome Council Miller, Council Captain, adding to what they took from that meeting to the rest of them.
Yeah, I agree with you, Councilor Phillips. I think it's going to be an extra cost. It could be possibly up to $19,000 a year, which is still less than buying our own ambulance and stocking it and staffing it. As we know, Northern Light has trouble covering the area with two and a half ambulances. This model will help us, I think, save more lives in our city and make our residents a lot safer for the most reasonable price.
Kevin.
Yes, I agree.
If we, if it is, the majority of the council does agree and gets to go ahead, or the Fire Chief has a plan to implement it, but it is also the fact that if it goes a year or so and we see some issues there, it doesn't mean it's a permanent situation, so, but I do think, after hearing testimony on both sides that, and evidence that, you know, if it's one of us or somebody we know or any person in the City of Ellsworth that they can help, that the services are available for, and it's a relatively, at this point, marginal cost, that it's our responsibility to meet those needs.
I'll just share one comment that's come through. Mr. Chairman, I write to support the continued approval and licensure of the Ellsworth Fire Department at the basic EMT non-transport level. Previous correspondents have stated my reasons. The members of the EFD have worked extremely hard to supply quality assistance to our citizens and guests in their time of need, and I ask the City Council to allow them to continue. Thank you for your time, Gary Fortier. And I would just comment that, just reading through the department reports, that it was, certainly stood out in terms of, I think you were certainly stood out in terms of, I think you were 90-plus calls by far, not even close in terms of the types of calls that you respond to. And so that, that certainly is, is evidence of, of the need to at least provide assistance. My understanding, one question I did have was that, that there is the ability to kind of triage the calls, that having this licensure, there may be the ability where we're not needed, where the ambulance service will say, no, you don't need to respond to that, that's appropriate, and there's a system in place to delineate that. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the ambulants can wave off the Fire Department if they feel are not needed.
So, and I assume that happens now?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Fire Chief to accept a revised agreement with the City of Ellsworth and the County of Hancock for providing Fletcher's Landing Town, oh wait, no, that's not the right one. We don't have that one in here. Is that the right one?
No.
I think you're reading the next one. This is Order Number 082014.
I don't have it in the packet.
Is it not in the packet?
Nothing supplied because of the guy.
Oh, okay. So this, you can just make a motion based on...
Move to, move to approve.
So you have a motion to second to approve the request of the committee to accept the recommendations of the committee to continue with the basic EMS licensure.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Good luck, police, Fire Chief Tupper, in managing your crew and moving this along. We hope that it works well. It's in your capable hands now.
Item 26, Council Order Number 082015, Request of the Fire Chief to Accept a Revised Agreement with the County of Hancock for Providing Fletcher's Landing Township Fire Protection, Emergency Medical Services Basic Level Non-Transport and Other Emergency Services.
So last month, I gave you an agreement that didn't include this. This is the one that includes providing EMS service to Fletcher's Landing Township at an additional cost of $2,500. So this is the same agreement, just with an additional fee for doing what we've been doing.
And this month is the only one to pick from.
Yes.
Any chance that the, you, you think you could convince them to throw in an additional amount to cover some kind of a small vehicle?
That discussion has not been had, but certainly if that was advised, that we could enter into that discussion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Fire Chief to Accept a Revised Agreement with the City of Ellsworth and the County of Hancock for Providing Fletcher's Landing Township Fire Protection, Emergency Medical Service Basic Level Non-Transport and Other Emergency Services as listed in the agreement.
Second.
A motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Item 27, Council Order Number 082016, Request of the Development Services Director to Accept the Keep Main Healthy Grant in the Amount of $59,400.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Jana Richards, Development Services Director. If you can remember, last month, we applied for it and we were awarded the first round of grants through the State Department of Health and Human Services Keep Main Healthy Program. We, they opened it up for a second round and we applied for additional activities. And we were awarded an amount of $41,580. The activities that we put into our application to be funded through this grant were to promote physical distancing and public health, which includes the purchase of more PPE, including hand sanitizer and masks. For public education activities, a working group was created during the first round of grants to help with the public education campaign to promote safety and stability amongst residents, business owners, employees, and visitors, guests. And this group will continue building on their efforts using the remainder of the round one funding and also utilize round two funding. Additional efforts include expanding radio advertisement that you might have heard, Ellsworth Thanks You, into signage, print advertising, and also social media advertising. The round two application also includes local business assistance through a partnership with Healthy Acadia. Healthy Acadia will be contracted to provide proactive education to the city's businesses on best public health practices, the DECD checklist guidance, and any further assistance in obtaining information on any additional resources the city may be able to provide our businesses at this time. This is a part-time contract position with Healthy Acadia. At this point, we've been given preliminary approval by the state, and I would ask that pending final approval, that the council please authorize the city manager to accept the grant from the DHHS Keep Main Healthy 2020 Municipal COVID-19 Awareness Campaign in the amount of $41,580. And I would take any questions if you have any.
Mr. Chairman, authorize the city manager to accept a $41,580 grant from the State of Maine Department of Health and Human Services Keep Main Healthy 2020 Municipal COVID-19 Awareness Campaign to fund public education, physical distancing, and public health support and local business assistance activities.
Motion to second, further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jana.
Good job, Jana.
Item 28, Council Order Number 082017, Discussion in Action on the Concept and Development of the Spirit of America Award Sponsored by Chair Hamilton. This was brought to our attention. It is a recognition that municipalities across the state, not all, but some, participate in, in terms of recognizing a resident for outstanding service. And it just felt like in terms of for this council to consider that, that we should really develop some, one, a recommendation of whether or not we want to participate in it, get, gather the material, look at it, and then also develop some parameters in terms of how we would actually carry that out on a, on an annual basis and what the criteria would be. So that's, that's the, the, the general nature of this item is to, one, if there's an interest in doing it, to then identify, either assigning it to an existing committee or have a, a short-term ad hoc committee to look at it, or if there's not an interest, to make that decision as well, either one. It's open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, is there a, a group behind this proposal?
There isn't. It was just brought to our attention that, and actually with the recommendation and making us aware of this particular award that exists already and, and communities are using it. So it was just, it was, it was a request from an individual in the, in the community to, to look at that. So I thought it was worthy to at least discuss it here, to decide if we wanted to look into it further or, or not.
The council would be charged with picking out one person each year?
Yeah, whatever the process comes up with, whether that's through a committee, that's part of the first task is to figure out if there's an interest, one, understanding what the Spirit of America Award is, and then if there's buy-in of saying, yes, okay, based on what we know about it, we want to do it, then what are the parameters in terms of how that would be carried out on an annual basis? I don't think we want to get into a situation where it's, it's so loose and forgotten and, you know, a one-time thing, and then somebody forgets that, that we did that. So we really need to craft some parameters if we're going to do that, whatever that looks like, whether that's the council or a group that's brought together for that purpose.
Maybe they're a key fault to the city.
Sounds pretty quiet, Mr. Chairman. I know for one that I have several, this is, I think, my third meeting of the day. I know we all have plenty going on, so it may be a noble cause, but personally, I pray to God you don't put me on the committee.
Sounds like a motion.
I wouldn't mind doing it.
So is there a desire to just vet it further before we take any kind of action? That's kind of hearing some ambivalence and rather than dispose of it, I mean, if that's, if that's what you want to do, that's fine as well, but I'm just, I'm hearing that you're not ready to, to move on it. So what would you like to do? Leave it as an ongoing discussion, or do you want to make a motion to not participate in? I'll leave that to the council.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we not participate.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion?
I think we could find out more about it first.
I would say I'm, I'm comfortable with it from the perspective that it can always come back to the council. And so what's, what I would say is I would encourage maybe some further looking into it informally, and if there's a group that's interested in that, then that may be a more thought-out full proposal could come before this, or a future council for consideration. Further discussion?
I think it would be fair to table it until we know more.
Yeah, at this point, we have a motion and a second, so. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstaining? So we have five to one to one. The motion passes. Council Order Number 29, oh, Number 29, Council Order Number 082018, Discussion in Action on Creating a Rainbow Crosswalk Within the City of Ellsworth Sponsored by Chair Hamilton. So let me just back up, I did not see this comment, I apologize. Recommendation, Gary Fortier, anytime you can honor a citizen, do it. So I apologize that that was not read prior to this. So with this discussion, I am going to turn this over to Ms. Cuthy for, kind of to present the, the request, and we will take it from there.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having us tonight. Can you hear me, just to make sure?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm the faculty advisor to the Gender Sexuality Diversity Alliance at Ober S. High School. And to sort of get you back to the very beginning and the origins of this project, while we were home during the quarantine in the spring, the group continued to meet Wednesdays after school via Zoom. And during the month of May, the kids were talking about Pride Month, which is June. And this happened to coincide with the release of the Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey, which is a biannual survey that the Maine Department of Health administers to all high school students in Maine. And the results of the survey really showed how much the LGBTQ community is suffering in terms of bullying and feeling safe at school, violence on and off school grounds, feeling like you have lack of adult support, lack of adults who care about you in your community, substance misuse, depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation attempts, and even dying by suicide. The, the numbers are definitely significant. And so the students and I were talking about this, and we decided, they decided, that they wanted to do something to raise awareness and to, to sort of solve this problem. And a student in particular had an idea, they'd seen the crosswalk in Bangor and thought, you know, why can't we do that in Ellsworth? Like, this is something that we need to talk about, this is something that we need to address, and this is a serious problem. And, you know, it, it is only paint, but it is a symbol of caring and acceptance and feeling valued in your community and, and really making sure that everyone, you know, of every age is welcome here in Ellsworth and that this is an okay place for everybody to be. The two statistics, and, and to be honest, I, I don't want to, you know, bore you with all these different statistics. I posted the, the Maine survey results in the Facebook comment. So if anyone is curious about them, you can go to the Maine Department of Education, but I did post them in the Facebook results, or the, the comment section, excuse me. But 63% of LGBTQ kids feel that they don't matter to their communities, and that's here in the state of Maine. And 58% of LGBT kids feel that adults other than their, their parents do not care about them. And so, you know, we, we did get endorsements from the school board, which we're really excited about, and we will paint some crosswalks on school grounds. But we also, as a group, really feel that this is a community issue that really goes beyond school, the schoolyard, and this is something we're hoping to bring to downtown, to raise awareness, and to make sure that everybody knows that this is, that it's okay to be in the LGBTQ community in Ellsworth and that, you know, we're happy that you're here. So if anyone has any questions, I think at this point, you know, we, we are open to discuss a lot about this project, including like where these crosswalks might go. So if you have any questions about this, I think now is a really good time to ask.
Yeah, where, where are you planning on putting the crosswalks?
So we have some ideas, and we're not super committed to any one place. We'd be willing to discuss that with, with, with the council for sure. We like the idea of one crossing Main Street, so between, say, Fins and the Grand or even farther down the street, the one on State Street by the public library, the one on Third Street by Nelson Park, and then there's one over on Forest Ave that crosses to the backside of the YMCA. So we were, we were hoping for two to three crosswalks, and we feel like those are some really good options. The students, I mentioned this before, the students applied for a grant through Healthy Acadia, and they received the grant. So for the next three years, not only will be, will be, we be able to pay for the paint for the cost of the crosswalk, but we'll be able to afford to repaint them next year and the year after. After those three years, we will be reapplying for the grant, so it's possible that we could have this grant for six years. If that doesn't work out, we feel strongly that we could fundraise for the cost of this. It's not a significant amount of money, we're talking a few hundred dollars in paint. Part of Ellsworth has generously offered to cover the cost of supplies, so things like rollers and tape. And we even talked about having an annual community event in the spring to repaint the crosswalks and call it something fun like Paint the Town and invite community members, whoever wants to, to come and paint. We'd like to get started before schools start, certainly on the ones with school grounds. The pandemic changes that a little bit, so we'll have to worry about social distancing, but, you know, we can handle that, that's not a big deal. But we would really like this to become an annual event in Ellsworth.
Good evening, councilors and, hi guys. I don't know which way they're at, but Lisa, Cycle Trip Public Works Director, I'm not here to sway, you know, whether or not you guys pass or don't pass the idea of these colored crosswalks. I just wanted to bring to light some concerns or some questions that I would have regarding this project. One of the things, as far as locations, per main DOT and requirements, the white of the crosswalks have to remain. so they would have to paint in between the white bars. They couldn't paint the whole crosswalk. It also is required that the speed limit on the road that is painted be 25 miles an hour or less. So that would dictate to where they could paint these crosswalks. My biggest concern is who is going to paint these crosswalks because the safety of everybody is a concern. And I personally would not feel comfortable having somebody who has not worked in the road painting these crosswalks. So I think it would have to be Public Works crews if you needed them painted. And as far as Main Street being painted, the only time that it would be able to be painted would be overnight. That's the only time traffic is light enough that we'd be able to actually paint across Main Street. So there's a lot of safety issues as far as getting the work done, along with legalities. I don't believe anyone under the age of 18 can be within a work zone, like traffic control work zone. So that would be another issue with trying to have the students paint any of these DOT crosswalks.
These are federal and state rules.
Right, these are federal and state roads, all of them, well, except for Third Street. But it's just concerns. It's stuff that we would have to discuss and work out with them if this were indeed to go forward. But there would essentially be city employee time for this work and potential overtime if we're going to paint overnight. So I just wanted to bring that to light.
Councilor.
I think that the especially these young people who are involved in this really do have some very important issues that need to be dealt with. They are asking for some respect and some understanding. And unfortunately, I do not think that painting a crosswalk is the right way to go. I support so many other things. I don't, I think it was a good idea to do it on the school grounds, but on a traffic, you know, what travel is going sometimes more than 25 miles an hour. I think it can be distracting. I don't think there should be anything except the traditional lines in a crosswalk, along with the markers that are out there. It's way too easy for for a driver to look just for a moment and miss somebody perhaps coming across the the crosswalk. And that's that's the sole reason why I'm not in favor of it, the safety issue of it.
Carrie, how did the other cities handle that problem? Can she hear us?
She's front. Can you hear?
Carrie, can you hear us?
Oh, I can now. I couldn't quite, I didn't understand that sentence. Could you say it again, please?
I said, how did how did the other cities handle that problem that have done it already?
Well, I spoke with the Public Works, one of the Public Works employees in South Portland, and I asked them, you know, what they felt. And they said that because the main DOT finds it safe and legal, they didn't feel like there was any problem with whether or not, you know, visibility or safety would be really a concern with with the crosswalk. In fact, there are several people who said they felt that the bright colors make it more visible and that it might actually be safer than just the plain white crosswalk, which which do fade, which, you know, the colors will too. But I mean, that's definitely an issue. I think, um, I think that, I mean, we would be certainly willing to to work with Mrs. Sekulic and make sure that we are following all of the regulations and the laws. I did talk with one of the traffic engineers at the DOT, his name is Bruce Mattson, and he's in the Bangor office. And he told me that he feels personally that the piano key style of crosswalk is the safest, and that's primarily what we have in Ellsworth. So he felt that we were in a good position already based on the current infrastructure that we have in Ellsworth to make this a project that would be safe. You know, I'm certainly not going to pretend that I am a DOT representative. I don't work for Public Works. In fact, you know, Ms. Sekulic has answered my question. She's been great to work with. And if you do approve this, we will work with her closely and follow her advice to make sure that we're doing everything that is that is safe and and in the law. I find it kind of ironic that safety is a huge concern, which, by the way, I'm a mom and a teacher, so safety is a big concern for me, too. You know, the last thing that we want in this group is for anyone to ever be hurt, certainly not in a crosswalk. But but the irony to me is that this project really is about safety. This project is about the safety of the LGBTQ community. And if we really look at the statistics of who is at risk here, that's a bigger risk. So it's something to consider when you're balancing out your thoughts on safety.
So councilors, if.
I would also like to add something quickly, which is that as far as it being a distraction, if you think about Main Street, I don't think that it would be any more distracting than some of the very attractive windows that the stores are doing, or people sitting and having coffee at Flexit and seeing a friend or I, the distraction issue, I don't think is about it more personally.
So if I may, one of the things that Chief Mosher and I discussed a couple days ago when we heard the request might be coming for Main Street, for a crossing on Main Street, is the one positive to Main Street would be that we do have the portable signs that we put off that say crosswalk and yield to pedestrians. And so if we did do a rainbow crosswalk across Main Street, we would make sure that it was one of the ones that had that traffic cone essentially, that mean sign. So you would have the, you know, you'd have your typical white, and you would have the colors painted in between, and then we would make sure to have one of those signs on that crosswalk also, just to reiterate that it is a crosswalk.
So councilors, if if it's okay with you, I'd like to read the comments that have come in so that we have the benefit of of feedback from the community so far. We've received prior to this emails, those emails did not indicate that they wanted, well, one asked not to have it read, but did not indicate permission to read it tonight. So I'll summarize some of the feedback that that we've had. But tonight, what we've received, let me just read through the comments. Bear with me as I open all of these. This one comes from Glenn Clark. I feel we have enough rainbow crosswalks in Ellsworth with the approval of them at the schools. I also feel that if we are to stay on the political correct line, then any further permanent markings in downtown Ellsworth should be an All Lives Matter or Keep America Great motives by showing pride in our country as well. From Nate Hanson, Dear Councilor Hamilton, I hope you and the other council members will strongly support the initiative shown by the group of Ellsworth High School students who have raised money and and created a plan for painting rainbow crosswalks at two locations in Ellsworth. I look forward to seeing the council support this project. Thank you, Nate Hanson. Members of the Ellsworth City Council, as a parent and teacher, I personally seen the benefits that a supportive inclusive community has for children that identify as members of the LGBTQ community. I hope that the city council will support and approve the request to paint crosswalks in our community with the pride flag colors. Respectfully, Kyle Snow. And then Gwen Clark. Here are some more ideas for crosswalks, red, white, and blue and black and white with a blue line. Just sharing some ideas here. John Stein, owner manager of Fogtown Brewing Company, Fogtown, would be very happy to help sponsor the crosswalk painting. If we are able to close Main Street for the Taste of Ellsworth or for the Christmas Parade or Memorial Day, they should be able to close the road for a short time in order to allow a group to have an event to paint a crosswalk. As for the safety issues, other cities have their crosswalks in even busier areas, such as the intersection of Main Street and State Street in downtown Bangor. The bright colors bring more attention to the crosswalk than a faded white walk or the beige and brick ones I've seen elsewhere. That's from Arlena Ford. Abigail Miller, These concerns have all been researched and addressed by this group. They have checked every box, crossed every T. If you need these questions answered, they should have sent these questions to Carrie previously. This is not a new concept. This has been done in many towns. The research and statistics show that supporting these kids is extremely needed. To not do so is to fail these kids. John Stein, Safety is a concern. However, it is not others' place to determine what is best or is most needed for groups like these. We must listen to these organizations like GSDA when they tell us what they want, need. That is how you support others. Thank you. I am writing to ask you and the city council to support the initiative to paint rainbow crosswalks in town. I believe this is very important and a visible way to show support for our LGBTQ community, as has been done in a number of Maine towns and cities. Our our son, now a voter, has given me permission to say he supports the measure. He says it's a cool idea, and he can't see why it would not be approved. And our daughter, a sophomore, is an enthusiastic supporter who says she is willing to help with the painting if needed. Thank you for your leadership during these strange pandemic times, and thank you for considering this measure for inclusivity in our community. Sarah DiMarkey. And those are the comments we've received this evening. Previous comments expressed similar issues about safety, the issue about whether or not we need DOT approval, and Lisa, you may be able to answer that or not. Location was an issue that had come up, and certainly several expressing support for it as well.
On the DOT issue, I think all you have to do is meet their specs. We're in the urban compact, so we manage the area, but we still have to follow their specifications.
So DOT has data been revised their crosswalk statutes just over a year ago, I believe. Or no, maybe it was 2015. I can't remember at this point. But it does allow for painting in between the white crosswalks in areas where the speed is less than 25 miles an hour. And they paint that we paint, the white has to remain, and then the paint in between the white has to be non retroreflective. So that means at night, you don't see it or it doesn't have that shine. So yes, we do have places throughout the city that would meet DOT requirements. And since we are an urban compact, it falls back on us to determine where and how and that kind of thing.
And also, in terms of colors, you can't use any colors that are used for directional purposes by the DOT?
Correct.
I don't know what those colors are, I'm on a joke, but.
Right, I strongly recommend not using common colors such as red and green and orange, just because they have meaning outside of designs and such.
White, yellow, all of that are federally defined in terms of what they need for direction. So they can't use any of those colors.
I just wanted to echo my support for Lisa with concerns about having the group, especially with young people in the roadway, painting these these crosswalks. I don't I don't have any objection to the concept of it or the idea of it. But I think Lisa's point to, you know, if we were to do it, to have her staff do it at night, when there's much less traffic, it's much safer. And I think that's, you know, I think that's a reasonable request of the city if you move forward with the idea or the concept of doing it.
Councilwoman Blanchett.
A couple of questions. One, Carolyn, why crosswalks?
I'm sorry, just to be clear, you said why crosswalks?
Yes.
Well, honestly, because that's what the students decided that they wanted to do, and they've seen it in other cities, in Bangor in particular. But a crosswalk is a symbol of safety. You know, it's a place where you are safe. And so there's there's a metaphor here. And honestly, like, this is a very affordable project, you know, like, getting grant money to afford some paint is, you know, different than, say, something else that might be more costly. So the kids are really thinking about, you know, on a metaphorical level, like, what could we do to symbolize that this is a safe space? What is something that we can actually do? We can actually handle painting something that is within our skill set. And I understand that that people have concerns about being in the street. And honestly, I think we can probably work that out. These are not little kids, for the most part. These are teenagers. And hopefully, we've all done our be safe in the street. And also, there are a lot of adults who are interested in doing this. You know, I'd be happy to sign a waiver of liability so that I can paint in the road and the city would not be responsible. But 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 the crosswalk, getting back to your question, it's just, it is a symbol. It's something within our capabilities, and it is something that is very visible. It's a visible symbol of safety, and that's really what we're trying to get at here. And actually, if you allow me to address, I don't remember actually whose comment it was in the emails, but somebody suggested, you know, other colors for other things. You know, I'd just like to say that we as a group, we're not here to censor anyone. If other people are interested in doing similar projects, like, we, I consider that their business. I think if, you know, people have asked me, you know, what happens if other people want to do this? I think they need to be held to the the same standard. You know, did they find funding? Are they willing to do the work? Do they have a maintenance plan? And honestly, you know, the people have brought up the issue of First Amendment rights. Well, if you say this, what if other people want to say that? The council, like, you guys have some editorial decision making here, and you get to decide largely how you want Ellsworth to be represented in this public forum. City streets are considered public forums, and and that speech is held to a higher standard. And so I think, you know, like, the the underlying messages here, is this a message that the council finds acceptable? We really hope that it is, because this is, you know, people have said, oh, this is very divisive. Personally, I think this is something that should be bringing us together. You know, that we want everyone in Ellsworth to feel welcome. We want everyone to feel like they matter and they're valued. And if other people want to do similar projects, so be it. This is America. That's okay.
One of one of my concerns, first of all, let me back up just a second. I walk a lot in this city. God, do I put miles on my shoes. And sometimes, crossing the busy streets at a crosswalk can be tedious at best, because people are on the telephone, they're putting makeup on, they're doing their hair, they're reading a book. God almighty, I think I've seen it all. And what I don't want to see is to have people's eyes drawn to a, the colors in a sidewalk, and not seeing the pedestrian. To use an old euphemism, not seeing the forest for the trees. They see the colors only. In 2018, in Maine, there were six pedestrian fatalities. In 2019, there were 17 pedestrian fatalities. The numbers do not drill down to what involved the crosswalk or not. But furthermore, from 2012 to 2017, 66 main people were killed, uh, main pedestrians were killed in traffic accidents. Across the USA, 6,227 pedestrians died in traffic accidents in 2018 alone, the highest number in 30 years. I applaud the kids for their thoughts, for their efforts, for their work that they put in this. But in my mind, this all comes down to safety. If I see a crosswalk in some other town, some other state, that's white with vertical bars, straight bars, piano keys, white piano keys, as you call it. bars, straight bars, piano keys, white piano keys, as you call it, I know what that is. I know what that is here. I know what that is there. And to turn the safety of a pedestrian crosswalk into a piece of art, with or without meaning, I think is the wrong message to send, that by and far, we have to keep safety tantamount to the known meanings of a crosswalk, and we have to keep them safe for pedestrians. We have to keep them safe for the people driving by them, that they notice people in those crosswalks, that they aren't noticing just the colors of them. So again, I applaud the efforts, but in this case, I have to come down on the side of safety for everybody, not just the LGBTQ students or person, excuse me, but for all of the residents of Ellsworth and the others that use them.
Council Grindel.
Mr. Jim.
I have a question.
Can you hold that for just, can you hold that just for a second?
Sure. We are sitting here debating this. This concept is not new in the country, nor in the state of Maine, and apparently, there are no, there's no data to support that a rainbow crosswalk is any more dangerous than a standard crosswalk. I think the point of this whole discussion is to decide whether we support this. I'm struggling for the word, this concept to show of support for the diversity of our citizens. Logistics, as the Public Works Director has said, of painting it, how to do it nighttime, daytime, and as the police chief has said, let's be careful who's in the road. So it would appear that we will be having our highway crew paint it. Lisa does say that we will need, and I think it's a good idea, to have one, be sure that where we ever do do it, that we have the sign that says, this is a crosswalk. So it all comes down to whether the majority of us support the concept or not. The safety issue, I honestly believe that there's nothing here to support one way or another. In the 25 mile an hour zone, Mark, you and your statistics, people are people. People doze, and people are going to get hit by cars no matter what you do. And in a small, slow zone like that, with that sign out, I personally can't believe this is going to make anything. And I think at this point, in hearing the folks and seeing the support for it, I would have no problem with one or two or three crosswalks as needed in certain areas in this city. And I think probably would need to go along. We can debate this all night long, and it's a matter of who, if we have a majority of support here for the concept. Logistics of how we do it is a different story.
Council Grindel, and then I'll go to Kerry Cutney afterwards.
First, I'd like to say, Kerry, I'm impressed with you and the students and your courage and positivity and hard work that's gone into this idea. I've listened to the many discussions, and I do have concerns about some of the statistics and the comments. I'm concerned that the students are experiencing bullying, violence, and harassment in our schools. And I would like a little more information on that, and I'd like to work towards fixing that. I'm also concerned with the statistic that LGBTQ students feel that the adults in their community do not support them. I'd like to know why. I'd like to know why they feel that way and how we can change that. I am going to say one reason that I cannot support it at this point is, what we allow for one, we must allow for all. And I think logistically, we don't have enough crosswalks to allow all to come and paint the crosswalks. And I just, I want you to know, because I don't support painting of our crosswalks does not mean that I don't support you. So I'm going to ask you to do a little more work. I know you've done a lot to get this far. But what else can we do as a community to support you besides painting the streets?
Ms. Cutney, you wanted to...
Well, what I was going to say before was in response to the gentleman's comments about safety. And my question was, are we certain that we have proper signage for all of our crosswalks as it is right now? Are they all well-painted and maintained as it is? But I think, and it's hard to tell, because on my screen, your faces are very small and you're wearing masks, but I think Mr. Phillips gave a great answer. Thank you very much. With regards to what you just said, Heidi, I think, I mean Heather, I'm sorry, yeah, I mean, there's lots of work that we need to do on this issue, without a doubt. And you asked why a lot of kids don't feel like the adults in their community support them. Well, if you go online, say Facebook, and you look at the Ellsworth American articles on their public website, and the Bangor Daily article, and you see some of the comments that adults have been willing to write, and next to their own names, it's absolutely shocking what some people are willing to say in a public forum. And so you might even argue that kids are more progressive on this issue than the older generation. And maybe that is something why we need to address this on a community level and not just on a school level. And the school is the best place to start. You know, I'm a teacher, I'm 100% pro-education. You know, Rachel Corman-Ramos and I are talking a lot about what can we do to add this, to add diversity training, to add understanding of other types of people and their families, you know, in an age-appropriate way, K through 12. This is something that we are absolutely trying to address. The pandemic is not making it any easier, let me tell you. But we're working on it, and we're working in that direction. But one of the things that we like about the crosswalk is that, you know, it is extremely visible, and everybody who drives through town, which is pretty much everybody, has to acknowledge it and has to talk about it. You know, like, no matter what happens with this outcome tonight, I'm delighted that we've got Ellsworth talking about something that prior to this, not a lot of people were willing to talk about. At least certainly not in any meaningful way in a public forum. So, you know, I think that's a real start. I hope you guys approve this project. And Heather, I have to disagree that if you approve this, you have to approve every other request. You know, and if that were really true, we wouldn't have to ask your permission. We would just go out there and say, well, the DOT allows this, let's paint. But we're here tonight asking your permission so that we can get some validation that, yes, this project is worthwhile. Now, that's not to say that other people's projects aren't worthwhile, but I will also add this detail, this specific, that South Portland, Bangor, and Orano have painted rainbow crosswalks in their communities, and not one other group has asked to paint anything else. So, you know, I think we have to ask ourselves, like, how likely is it, you know, that another group is going to put together a proposal, they're going to fundraise, they're going to come up with a maintenance plan, they're actually going to follow through on this? You know, and that's something else that I feel like I need to work into this. Like, these are teenagers. As a high school teacher, this is an inordinate amount of civic engagement for a bunch of kids. You know, like, they found a problem, they found a solution that they could actually attain, they wrote a grant, they received it, they came up with a maintenance plan, they've attended public meetings, which, by the way, I got to tell you, this is nothing compared to Netflix. It's hard to sit through this when you're 44, in terms of levels of excitement, never mind when you're 17. And I'm happy to be here, but like, the average teenager is not here. So these are the kids you're going to be voting for in 20 years. Like, these are the kids who, you know, they are going to write the new policies, and what are we going to teach them? That they're going to do all this work, and they're going to have this great cause, and it's all for naught? You know, as a teacher, that doesn't feel really, it doesn't feel good at all. So if you think this is a worthwhile cause, I encourage you to approve this project. And then if someone else has a project, maybe that's worthwhile too. We have 60 crosswalks in Ellsworth, and the city judge told me that. So I think we probably do have enough.
So, you know, to your point about the meeting and the process, I'm just wondering if Rory is going to change her major yet, or if she's, this meeting hasn't swayed you, has it, political science?
No, I'm sticking with political science now. Thank you.
Just checking. So I just want to read, one other comment came in. Please tell Ms. Villancet that his argument of people's eyes being drawn away is moot. No one made an argument against the senior class having their names on light poles, not once, saying that is just another way to push the LGBT community back and make them feel less important than other kids in the community. Abby Miller. And, okay, that's it. I would also like to comment, and again, I've had a chance to say this, I appreciated the opportunity to meet in advance of this meeting with many of you. And like Council Grindel noted, for young people to be this involved and invested in their community is a good thing. And one of the comments I made about this is that I really don't think that this has to be a controversial issue. I certainly am not oblivious to the fact that for some, it is. But at the very heart of the request is a message of acceptance. And we probably need more of that right now in our community and in our country, is to understand that we can face problems better together. We can have differences of opinion, but when we come together on that basic human level of accepting people for who they are, we make a lot of gains. And certainly, the rainbow symbol can have many meanings, and for the bottom line, for me, it's that, it's that one message of acceptance. And I think that's important, and I think everybody can agree to that, I really do. Even people that make some of the comments that are made, I think at the heart of it, that that's what people want. I think that's what we all strive for. So I appreciate the fact that you have pushed that agenda forward. I do, as we talked about, I put on some of, on the table in advance, some of the issues that I think are out there. And I didn't realize this, honestly, until this evening, that there is an ordinance that talks about painting sidewalks and streets. And so from that perspective, those logistical things are things that can be overcome. My question, as I sit here tonight, is, is tonight the place that they can, that we can overcome those issues to get it right? And when I say get it right, is that if there are ordinances and precedents and we don't set up a good process, then we potentially set it up for failure. And so as I sit here tonight, what I think is a good path forward is to be able to say personally, I support the idea, but I think we need to get some structure and parameters in place as a city so that we'll be successful, so we don't battle some of those battles that are necessary because we didn't do that due diligence. And that due diligence doesn't have to, I'm not talking about something that takes years and years to go through. I think it's something that can be addressed fairly quickly. So, and it's not unusual for a request to come forward to the city council, for the council then to say, oh, what about this issue and this issue? Let's take it back, let's work it, let's get it right, and come back and then approve it from that perspective. So I say that in terms of the nature of the request isn't the issue. There are some of those logistical things that I think can be addressed pretty quickly so that we could then come back and have a much better outcome for the short and long term. And I think that that's probably the best interest of all, to have a long-term outcome. And as I said, and what Council Grindel said, I think is important too, is you've started a conversation that should continue, and we should find a way to do that in a formal way beyond just this one request as we move forward, so.
Could I add something as a senior member of the LGBT community? I'm a 68-year-old man who lives in Ellsworth, and I am so thrilled to see that these kids have taken on this project, which, if I think about my time when I was their age, this could have never existed and never in a million years would I have ever dreamed that this is what could happen one day. And it's very, very meaningful to these kids, but it's also very meaningful to all of us in the community of any age to be acknowledged and to, and I know that Ellsworth is a friendly town. I've lived here for about six years, and I am very involved in many activities here and have always, always been accepted. But I want everybody to know that, that drives through Ellsworth, that this is a place that everyone can feel safe and good and accepted. That's it.
Abby wanted to add something about safety concerns.
So according to the Maine Youth Integrated Health Survey in 2019, 24% of gay and lesbian high schools in our county considered suicide compared to 6% of straight high schoolers.
Hey, Kerry? On the topic of having the DOT involved, did the other cities have the city departments of transportation coming in and painting the sidewalks for them, or were they able to do that on their own? Do you know the answer to that question?
I don't actually know the answer to that question. I can find out and get back to you, but I, that was not something I thought to ask about.
Yeah.
In fact, I thought we were doing everyone a favor by offering to do it ourselves. It didn't occur to me that that would end up being a point of contention.
I do know in Bangor that the Public Works Department is the one that did the painting.
Bangor Public Works did theirs, and Orano Public Works did theirs. I don't know about South Portland.
And it's not a matter of liability or absolving liability, it's federal works, place standards that drive it.
So a couple of comments came in, and I hope I pronounce the name correctly, E. Mathias came in the third. Do not stand in the way of these children, it has to start somewhere, stand with your community. And then, let's install additional pedestrian blinking crosswalk lights. If Council Blanchett walks that much, I'm sure he knows that our standard Main Street crosswalks are very dangerous as they are, even though they are just black and white. Does he remember the six months of the year before the crosswalks are repainted and are barely visible? If the issue is really safety, let's make all our crosswalks safe for everyone, then paint them rainbow colors to support these kids. John Stein.
Also, if there is a need for more money for overtime, I still think that will be a reasonable amount of money that we could go back and see if our committee can approve more funding, or if we can fundraise for that. I don't see that as an incentive to you at all.
Council Blanchett and then Council Kaplan.
Just in reply to the last comment, actually, the crosswalks on Main Street I find quite safe. I've never had an issue with any of them.
Council Kaplan.
Before this vote, I wanted to gauge community interest, and I conducted, I would say, a very informal poll. I don't know how many were Ellsworth residents versus outside residents, but it was pretty much 80% for. And I did say that I would abide by the will of the voters. Because it is a hot-button issue for some, they are going to be some that are upset no matter how we vote. But it's about these kids. I mean, I look at Rory up there and Abby, is it Abby or Addie?
Abby.
And Benjamin, I mean, they've put their heart and soul into this. And, you know, being a grandmother, I never want to disappoint kids. But at the same time, these are public streets, and they are everybody's streets. And so, you know, whatever the voters want, the voters should have a say-so in what they get. I don't know if this is something that could be passed on to the voter and let the voters decide, or if we just go with the majority, you know, of what people have said so far. I think that the, even if it didn't pass, I think that there's plenty of private buildings out there that you could put a beautiful mural on, and I'd be right there beside you to help you paint it. So if, it's hard to say. It's not an easy answer, you know, when you're looking at what people in the city want.
Council Moll.
I agree with Council Kaplan in that these kids, they showed a great deal of initiative in figuring out how to get funding, writing letters to the school board, to the city council. This shows a lot of community involvement, and I'm not willing to crush their enthusiasm, and I think they should, you know, let them paint a couple of crosswalks. Come on, it's not that big a deal. paint a couple of crosswalks, come on, it's not that big a deal.
Okay. So Ms. Cuddy, one of the things I would ask you, and anybody can answer this, I guess the thing that I would propose, given that some of those logistical pieces that we're talking about, would there be a willingness for some of your group to work in collaboration with us in a short-term committee to come up with the recommendations around that so that we can address the logistical piece and be sure that we don't create that kind of adversity simply because of those issues coming up after the fact? And so I ask that of you, because that would help me to make my decision as well.
Absolutely. In fact, we did not have a commitment to any particular crosswalk for this very reason, so that, you know, we could be flexible, and we could work with you to make sure that we're following the laws and we're keeping everything safe, and it works out in everybody's best interest. So of course, we would absolutely welcome the chance to work with you in a committee to make these decisions and to make this happen in a more smooth process. In fact, I think that would be a fantastic learning opportunity for these kids. So something to write on their resume, they worked in a committee or on a committee with government officials in their town.
I think it'd be a learning opportunity for us, but that's.
We're trying to encourage these kids to come forward and work with us in government, but putting them on a committee might be a push in the wrong direction. I sat on too many committees in my life.
All part of the process, Rory knows this. So, councilors, where are we at?
I guess we're at a point where we have to decide if there's enough support to move ahead with it, hopefully there is. And you discuss committees, and is the committee the police chief, public works director, and the manager meeting with this group and deciding what works logistically and areas that they feel that are safe, and hopefully the group coming to the thing? And do we need to discuss it again? Do we just need to agree with the concept and say, allow them to do two sidewalks, three -- two crosswalks, three crosswalks? How much more do we need to debate it? We all have our own opinions, that's obvious, and our own thoughts on the process. Let's just narrow it down, move along.
I would suggest more of a middle of the, no pun intended, middle of the road approach to narrowing down the number of crosswalks. I think that a great place to start would be Main Street, you know, right by the grand. I think that that would be an excellent location for something like this. And that way, it's kind of middle of the road, it's not several crosswalks. I mean, they've already got two at the schools, so, you know, this is just a third.
Who's wondering if I might be able to add a comment? I don't know if that's.
Yes, please do.
All right. So I know personally, I'm currently, I'm going to be a senior in high school. I go to Ellsworth High School, I work in Ellsworth, I live in Ellsworth. And definitely, like, seeing something like this would be really awesome, I think. My freshman and sophomore year, I saw a lot of adults and kids using plenty of language, colorful language, meant in a derogatory sense, to people who were or were not in the LGBT community. And it definitely created a mindset that the adults around me, that I didn't personally know, either didn't like me or were working against me. And hearing a lot of the support from places like Fog Town Brewery, it's just, it's made my week, to say the least, to know that those places do support this. And I think that, I think the crosswalks are a great idea. I would love to, I would actually drive up Main Street to work. I don't usually, but I would, probably every day if there was rainbow crosswalks.
Counsel More.
I think your group has put on a very, very good drive. I think you all should feel very proud of yourself. And I will say that if this passes and we have painted crosswalks, I won't lose any sleep. You guys did a good job.
Well, thank you for giving us this opportunity, and for asking such meaningful questions, and for making meaningful comments, and for engaging in this dialogue, because really that is always the first place to start. And that in itself is a lesson for everyone watching. So thank you very much, we do appreciate it.
So before I ask the council for a recommendation, I do want to point out something that I think is important to note. And maybe it's unique in terms of what I've received, and I know there were comments on BDN article, but for this community, of all the comments that we've, that I've read this evening and that we received before, I think that the, if you look at the nature of those comments, it really does show something that you mentioned, Peter, about this community, and that there is a lot of acceptance, understanding, and support, and we're not getting those kind of comments that would really, you know, make you feel terrible about the kind of community we live in. So I just wanted to make that observation, because I do think that's important to note about this community. With that, councilors.
Would you like some type of motion, and should, do we want to try to form a committee? Do you want to do a resolution supporting it, and then work on the logistics of the committee or group that decides where?
I think in terms of process, a resolution to support it, and then having an opportunity to work with your group, knowing that you have two crosswalks started, and we can pull this group together very quickly, have that discussion, work out those parameters, and then move it forward from there, would make a lot of sense in terms of the process part. It would be consistent with other processes like these types of requests. It sounds like there's a willingness for your group to meet with us and to move that forward. Does that seem like a good place for all of you, in terms of if we go in that direction?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I move we support the request of the group to have a rainbow crosswalks in Ellsworth. The amount and location to be determined after a small committee of perhaps the public works director, the police chief, and maybe the manager and the group asking, sat down and discussed where and what.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, further discussion. No further discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? And abstentions? So we have.
Abstentions, generally, I was under the impression when I was chairman, the abstention would be, I'm not sure if it's a belief, I don't think that was. Okay.
So in this case, with a three-to-three vote, the motion does not pass.
Nope.
At this point. Any further discussion on this item? So I would, I would like to make a motion. And the motion I would like to make is that we form a working committee with representatives from the Ms. Cuddy's group, GSDA group, members of this council and city staff to continue to work on a proposal to bring that forward, working out logistics and come back to the council with a proposal.
May I second that?
You have a motion and seconds?
I have a question about.
It's discussion, so.
When you talk about logistics, do you mean just, like, property logistics? Are you talking the ordinance logistics?
Ordinance, all put together, the whole piece, so that all of those items that we've talked about this evening that related to those parameters are looked at, discussed, and then that group can come back and make a recommendation out of that process.
Okay.
Other discussion? Counsel Grendel.
Mr. Chairman, I was, with the Ms. Kaplan's abstention, and I'm not, and it was Robert's Rules of Order, and I don't have it in front of me to remind you, but Mr. Fortier, who has served on this committee before, has sent a text, and if Counselor Kaplan can't express a conflict of interest, her vote is recorded as affirmative. And that's what I thought, and that's Robert's Rules of Order. It's a fairly limited amount of reasons why you can abstain, and if there is a conflict of interest in your process or can state it, then that would be the reason you can abstain.
All right, well, we'll pause for a second so that we get this right.
Yeah, financial. It's financial, that's what I thought, but it's.
So, looking at it quickly, I think it's correct. However, there's also the ability with Robert's Rules that members are not required to vote. So in effect, you can vote for, against, or not vote. And in that case, your vote obviously does not count, and it reduces. Let me continue. All right. So, from Robert's Rules, do abstention votes count? Answer: The phrase abstention votes is an oxymoron, and abstention being a refusal to vote. To abstain means to refrain from voting, and as a consequence, there can be no such thing as an abstention vote. In the unusual, in the usual situation where either a majority vote or two-thirds vote is required, abstentions have absolutely no effect on the outcome of the vote, since what is required is either majority or two-thirds of the votes cast. On the other hand, if the vote required is a majority or two-thirds of the members present, or a majority or two-thirds of the entire membership, an abstention will have the same effect as a no vote. Even in such a case, however, abstention is not a vote and is not counted as a vote. So effectively, what that means is that it's a non-vote, that a member does not have to vote, and that it reduces then in that case the majority down to the individuals who do vote. And so in either case, in either ruling of this, it would still come out 3-3 where it doesn't prevail. So it really has no effect on the outcome of the vote by not voting. And there's no requirement for a member to vote, according to Robert's Rules.
Is your motion still in consideration?
Yes, it was seconded, but we need to clean up the Robert's Rules issue. This is coming from the official Robert's Rules site. So with that, the new motion that has been seconded is on the table for discussion.
Would you repeat that motion, Dave?
Yes. The motion was to form an ad hoc committee consisting of members of the GSDA committee group, members of this council, city staff, to look at all aspects of the issues that were raised tonight in terms of ordinances, logistics, so that a full recommendation can then come back to the council for recommendation for whatever recommendation that group comes forward with.
I'd be happy to be on that council as well. If one is appointed.
So does that in the end mean we support the issue, or does that mean we just table it and talk about it again and let it die another death?
Well, it means that we keep the process going and we keep the discussion going. And I think that, for me, that's an important part of this process, is to make sure that we're continuing the discussion and proposing that framework for that to happen.
I think if you do that, they'll have some better information in order to make a decision. It'll be more, it'll give them a chance to think it out more and maybe learn a little bit more.
I think it'll also be good for the kids to be part of it.
Second, right?
So I have a question. I don't know if I'm.
At this point, you can't, because of, we're in, we have a motion and a second, and we're about to vote. So all those in favor of the motion? Unanimous, the motion passes. So Ms. Cuddy, I will be in touch with you, and we can talk about pulling that together.
That would be great, thank you so much, Jim.
Okay. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Item number 30, Council Order Number 082019, Discussion in Action on the Creation of a Committee to Support Funding the Library and Appointment of Councilors to that committee, sponsored by Chair Hamilton. So this is the, we had identified that we wanted to bring a committee of the members of the Board of Trustees, a community representatives, and two members of this council to form a committee to work at addressing the issue of surrounding communities in terms of funding. And that was a process that we had endorsed during the budgeting process. And so this is a process to identify who would be interested in participating on that committee. Counsel Kaplan? Anyone else have, Counsel Grendel? All right, so Counsel Kaplan and Counsel Grendel will be appointed to that committee. Do you want to go back and just miss a comment? I believe that this is a misuse of abstention. I don't believe there was a conflict of interest, you may not abstain simply because you don't want to decide. John Stein, I think we addressed that with the reference to Robert's Rules. Item 31, Executive Session to Discuss Personnel Matters in accordance with MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A.
So move.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, and we will not be coming out of executive session with a report. So we are in executive session.